Good evening and welcome to the June 8, 2021 Gilroyland Central School District Board of Education Meeting. Would you all please silence your cell phones and recite the pledge? The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First on the agenda tonight, we have six public comments. So I will start with number one. This one says, Dear Dr. Superintendent Wiles and the entire Gilroyland Central School Board of Education, It has recently come to our attention that morning announcements at FMS featured the following message. Please see attached screenshot from video in question. Telling unvaccinated children that they're ruining it for everyone if they don't get the vaccine is absurd. And we are shocked that the Gilroyland School District is even putting this burden on children when it is clearly not their choice to make. Whether you are for or against the COVID vaccine, this is a parent's decision, not the child's, and definitely not the schools. My husband and I, along with our child's pediatrician, get to decide what shots are needed for our child and which ones aren't. The Gilroyland School District does not get to decide this. Last we checked, the vaccine is not fully FDA approved, nor is it mandatory. Approved for emergency use only, which makes this an experimental vaccine. We are not injecting our child in an experimental vaccine that there is no long-term data on the side effects of, nor science to support that he or anyone else under the age of 18 even needs. We are dumbfounded that any school district would be pushing this on their students, much less the one that our child attends. We personally don't know if any parents who plan to vaccinate their children once the vaccine becomes available to children younger than 12. This includes parents who are fully vaccinated themselves. Stating that more than 10% of parents don't want their children getting any needed shots is a blatant lie. The shot isn't needed. And where are you getting this data from? From a brief poll we've done with just family and friends at the school district, it's closer to 50% or higher. This is nothing more than a play on words to make a child believe that they and their families are in the minority when it comes to not wanting to get the vaccine, when that is absolutely not the case. What was the intent then? To condition our children to go against their parents' wishes? Force them to get the vaccine or become a social pariah? To turn on our children's friends against them? Because that is exactly what this very message is priming them to do. Go against one another and divide us. The haves and the have-nots, the vaccinated and the unvaccinated. It is very disheartening to learn that such propaganda is being taught to the children in the school district. When we first moved to Gilroyland three and a half years ago, we were so excited to send our children to Gilroyland schools. But now, knowing that these kinds of messages are being pushed on the students, we are seriously considering whether we want to continue to send our children here at all. I'm writing you today to let you know that these types of messages are not acceptable. We pay taxes for our schools to teach our children, not insert their opinion on a personal choice, which is what the, what the getting the COVID vaccine is a personal choice. We will, we along with several other outraged parents, oh, did I miss a page? Sorry. I know those are slides. We along with several outraged parents demand answers as to why this video was deemed acceptable to play, or why there has been no formal apology from the school district for having allowed to, for having allowed it to occur. We will not stand for our children to be bullied into getting a vaccine that is not mandatory. A vaccine that we do not want, nor one that we need, we feel that we need. Sincerely, Bill and Lou DePatton, parents of a child at Westman Elementary. Okay, public comment number two. I wasn't born in this country. I came here at a young age. English was not our primary language. We were beyond poor. My parents worked several jobs to make ends meet for our family. I experienced racism. It witnessed racism directed towards others throughout my childhood education. Fast forward 30 years, and my child has a whole host of opportunities that I never had. And yet, she still experiences racism and witnesses racism directed towards others during her childhood education. I write this, board members, because there are few of you who think that this position of a full-time DEI officer is unnecessary and even contrary to the notion of inclusion. I'm here to say that the work isn't done. A whole generation has passed and the work remains. To even put the phrase "the work" in quotes repeatedly as if it's some imaginary construct and not an actual thing is so unbelievably condescending that it just further proves the point that the work is there and it needs to be done. It's ironic that one of the school, one of those board members highlighted Clark versus Democracy Prep Chapter School in last month's meeting, because the point of that case in sum and substance was that no one listened to the black mom as she was saying that the curriculum wasn't just. For me, at least, that's part of the work that the DEI officer does. It's just, it's also ironic that race essentialism and neo segregation were mentioned. Are you aware that in 2014, 60 years after the landmark case of Brown versus Board of Education, UCLA conducted a survey in New York State was listed as having the most segregated schools in the country? The work is there and it needs to be done. With regard to the notion that racism is no longer a concern, that argument simply has no merit. Some members of the board feel that if something happens to your child, you share that horrendous happening. That should work its way up the system and we should hear about it. Those sentences are replete with privilege. Allow me to walk you through my experience with racism in my child's brief time at the Gilroyland Central School District. Around Thanksgiving, my daughter mentioned to me that one of her teachers ignores the concepts of BIPOC children in the classroom. She said that the teacher sees BIPOC children raising their hands and ignores them and only calls them the white children. As with most things my daughter tells me, I asked her, do you want me to just listen or do you want me to do something? Her response was that she just wanted me to listen, so that's what I did. I remained silent. Shortly thereafter, her school was shut down due to one COVID positive case. The teacher sent out the virtual learning schedule on Monday afternoon. Every hour of every day was different, with the exception of morning meeting, volleying between synchronous and asynchronous learning. I emailed all the teachers that afternoon, that same afternoon, as soon as I saw the schedule, asking if we could do blocks of synchronous learning instead of alternating every hour. I never received a response to that email. There was a PTA meeting that evening. When the meeting was open for questions, I asked whether we could do blocks of synchronous learning instead of alternating. The principal said, "That's just something I would need to discuss with the teachers." He didn't ask me if I did email the teachers. He just presumed that I hadn't. I'm sure the principal thought that if a parent emailed the teachers, the teachers would respond. A white mom chimed in, chimed in at that point and said that she had reached out to the teachers after seeing the schedule, and they got right back to her. She never asked me if I emailed the teachers, because in her experience, they responded right away. Why wouldn't they respond to me if they responded to her? The principal then confirmed that I should contact the teachers and move on to the next question. Blank was also, or Redacted was also at that meeting and never mentioned that I'd emailed them and that they didn't have a chance to get back to me. In an effort to not throw the teachers under the bus, I remained silent. Around the same time, a book came home that was racially inappropriate. I wrote to Redacted about my concerns and received no response. Recognizing that this was a library book, I reached out to the school librarian about it, and she immediately addressed the situation and handled it like a true ally. In February, another book came home that was also racially inappropriate. This was not a library book. I again wrote to Redacted. Again, I received no response. I had to send three notes, three emails, and place two phone calls before I ever received an appropriate response. And the response received by the principal, not by Redacted. My daughter's statement that Redacted ignores BIPOC children was corroborated by the fact that she just as readily ignored my husband and me. Not only did she ignore, she confronted my child about her behavior regarding that book. Luckily, my six-year-old had the wherewithal to tell her teacher to talk to us. However, Redacted still never contacted me. It's clear that Redacted knew we were upset about the book. She confronted my child about it. Regardless, she still ignored us and our concerns. It was at that point I escalated it to the principal. However, when I talked to the white parents about Redacted, they say, "Yeah, she's difficult, but at least she's responsive." That has not been my experience. These microaggressions go further. My child has been sent home twice this year, at the end of the day, when she wasn't even sick. She had been in school both those days from 7:20 to noon without issue. Most recently, after running around outside for recess during peak allergy season, she came home with some sniffles and Redacted sent my child home for a COVID test. This affects our jobs, costs additional copays for every doctor's visit, and had my child, and has caused my daughter to miss a lot of classroom instruction due to COVID testing. Still, I remain silent. The reason I'm writing though is not because of the repugnant things that some board members have said, making it clear that they have no idea how pervasive racism is within the district. The reason I'm writing is because of something that my daughter said to me recently after one school, after school one day. She said that teachers still don't call on her when she raises her hand to answer a question or when she volunteers for something in the class. This has been the recurring theme of this year. She recently switched seats, and she said that now they definitely can see her, but they still don't call on her. And then she said that she wished, she wished she was, quote, "perfect," like the white children, because teachers always call on them and not her, unquote. That was the day I realized my silence has to end. To see my brilliant, beautiful daughter, my heart walking outside my body, made to feel less than a place that is supposed to lift her up simply because she has a little more melanin than others, other students broke me. Or to have to say to her that the teachers always believe the white children over whenever there's a disagreement. Or for Redacted to say to the class something like, "If you want to know how to behave, look at the white children." I realized I had to break my silence. You might be thinking there's an innocent explanation for these instances. Maybe the teachers didn't have a chance to respond to me the same day I sent my initial email regarding the virtual learning schedule, maybe. But I never got a response on Tuesday either. Finally, on Wednesday, deep in the torture that is homeschooling while working, I reached out again. This time I did receive a response, albeit, albeit underwhelming. But remember, they were able to respond to the white mom right away on the same day. And I'm fairly confident that had I not reached out again, I would never have, would have never received a response. You might be thinking that maybe the teachers didn't like me, which is why they responded to the white mom and not me. Maybe. At that point, I hadn't given them a reason not to like me. I appreciate good teachers. They have transformed my life. I support good teachers and have ever, and have ever since my daughter was in daycare. I go all out for every possible occasion. The beginning of this year was no exception. I sent welcome to, welcome to new school year appreciation gifts. I organized the holiday presents for all the teachers and staff for the whole grade. I asked randomly throughout the year if they needed any additional supplies for the classrooms. I donated to their e-wallets for the book fair, and I sent random things, random encouraging messages. I'm not saying that they should respond to me because I did those things. I'm saying they should respond to me because I'm a parent of a child in their classroom. Those things were just my way to show my support. You might be thinking that the teachers didn't like my daughter, maybe. But during the parent-teacher conference in autumn, they said that she was very polite, very sweet, et cetera. And I cannot imagine that so much changed in a month's time for them to suddenly feel the need to treat her so differently. You might be thinking that your child has also been sent home for fake COVID symptoms and it had nothing to do with race. Was your child sent home within the last hour of school? There is no innocent explanation for her being sent home at the very end of the day when she had no symptoms at all. You might be thinking that maybe the white children are just better behaved. I submit that they're not. I know these role model children well, and they're not any different from my daughter. The problem is that some teachers have more patience for white children than BIPOC children, and that is evident here. How can I prove this bias? You board members will never see this. I've had plenty of teachers like this. Those that use their nice voice for their favorite, read white students or whenever an adult is in the room, while heavily, while heavy sighing, rolling their eyes, and talking down to the BIPOC students. These teachers consistently call on their white, their favorite students while ignoring the students of color, which dissuades students of color from being engaged in the classroom. It causes a distaste for school and an unwillingness to learn. The teachers are less tolerant of BIPOC children's behavior, behaviors, and are harsher with BIPOC children's students in terms of punishment. I witnessed this firsthand. I witnessed this repeatedly. You cannot tell me it doesn't, it doesn't exist. I would even challenge you, board members, to picture in your own my next year's Gilroyland High School valedictorian. Does that person look like Benjamin Goze? When you think of a teacher for Gilroyland High School, does that person look like Barbara Fratirigo? And when you think of a student in detention, does that person look like no one on this board? To be clear, this is not an indictment of all teachers. As I previously said, good teachers have transformed my life. I'm extremely grateful for good teachers. When I figure out how to nominate my daughter's kindergarten teacher for National Teacher of the Year Award, I will, because she was amazing. But we are fooling ourselves if we think that the only problems in this district regarding equity are with some kids being kids. The problem is deep and systemic, and the work is there. The work needs to be done. Racism is a spectrum with varying degrees of conscious and unconscious behaviors reinforced by society. To say that it doesn't exist serves no purpose. We need to address it and learn to undo the implicit biases that we have. Some people may think that promoting equity is inherently unfair to the groups that aren't being promoted. Some people think that they have had hard lives, so privilege never benefited them. They may have had hard lives, but privilege isn't the presence of benefits. It's the absence of barriers. I'm quite cognizant of my privilege in this situation. I have only one job. Accordingly, I have the time to send several notes, emails, and phone calls awaiting in response to that one concern for my one child. That doesn't even include, that doesn't even include the back-and-forth conversation I did have with the principal. It doesn't mean that I want to spend this much time on it, on this issue, but I'm able to. Most parents don't have that luxury. So when you say that most parents don't complain, it's not because there's not a problem. It's because they don't have the time to deal with all of this. I have the time to listen to a school board meeting for two and a half hours and then sense, and then spend several hours crafting a response. That doesn't even include the emotional toll and mental space that this has taken, that this issue has taken. I am proficient in English, enough in English that I can convey my thoughts to you in somewhat articulate manner. That's not the case for everyone. Even writing this causes me concern with regard to the retaliation my daughter will face going forward. As it is, the principal is already CC'd on all responses by her teachers. Even innocuous ones like, "Can I read a book to the class for her birthday?" Surely you can see how a parent would have no desire to go through any of this at all. Someone needs to reach out to all parents in a confidential way. Someone needs to meet them where they are. The work is there. It needs to be done. So I'm sending this email on behalf of all of those who can't. All of those who don't know this process, all of those who don't have the benefit of my privilege, your privilege may allow you to get a return email when you're, when you email your child's teacher. It may prevent a noon COVID call because your child suddenly has the sniffles after being in school for over five hours. But most importantly, it may allow your child to be a participant in the classroom instead of just getting looked over. It doesn't mean that your life isn't hard. It just means that you don't have to battle these barriers in getting a quality education. It may mean your child doesn't hate school in the first grade, when she's love-learning her whole life and was unbelievably excited to start the school year. And this is honestly just the tip of the iceberg. If I sat here and wrote every single thing that's happened this year, it would be unbelievably long. I submit that promoting equity is a lot like this. Recently, the district came together to help two students who are battling a rare form of cancer. I don't know those students. My daughter doesn't know them. I don't know their parents, but still, I bought the shirt. I made the donation. I ordered the chicken parm. I didn't hear any public comments demanding a quid pro quo because we helped a couple of students, but not every single student, and plenty of students are struggling this year. I didn't hear any comments asking, "Why isn't there a fundraiser for children with diabetes?" At that point, those students with cancer were our focus, and we came together to help them, like we should. Just because we're helping some doesn't mean we're taking away from others. I'm imploring the district to come together with that same fervor so every child may feel like a valued participant in the classroom. To the allies on the board, thank you. We wouldn't have made it this far without you, and I'm so grateful to you. The work is there. It needs to be done, and I'm excited to see it get done. Very truly yours, Lindsay Jacob. Public comment number three. This is to the Gilroyland School Board from the Varsity Girls Golf Team. We respectfully request that a Varsity Girls Golf Coach be added for the upcoming fall season. It's simply not equitable that we do not have a full-time coach. Title IX legislation clearly states girls should be provided with the same opportunities as boys. We have a boys' varsity golf coach, but we do not have a girls' varsity golf coach. What follows is a brief history of the girls' golf program and reasons why we should have a coach. Girls' golf officially became a varsity sport in Section Two in the fall of 2019. Gilroyland had five girls that year. The number grew to eight last year, which is considered by all accounts a full high school golf team. The boys' team had nine players last year. The girls had a great season, finishing second in the suburban council. There were no seniors last year, and all the girls plan to return for the upcoming fall season. We expect additional players to try out as well, as participated, as participation is trending upward. During these two seasons, the girls did not have their own coach. The varsity boys' coach took on the responsibility of coaching both teams. Mr. Austin wrote a very compelling case to add a girls' coach for the upcoming season, but it was denied by the district budget committee. Bethlehem, Shaker, Shenandoah, Saratoga, and Columbia all have separate coaches for their boys' and girls' teams. Gilroyland is the only suburban council school with a full girls' team without a coach. Ramifications of not having a coach for the girls' team. The girls are not receiving the guidance, support, and overall benefits associated with having a qualified full-time coach dedicated to their team alone. The girls and boys are required to have all their matches at the same course. Since the girls follow the boys on the course, their matches are frequently cut short because of darkness. Typically, the boys play nine holes, and the girls play seven or eight, which is not a full match. This is extremely unfair to the girls. With a separate coach, they could play a separate course than the boys on most days. This is the practice for the schools with two coaches. In addition, when the boys have matches against the girl, against the schools that do not have girls' teams, currently CBA, Burn Hills, and April Park, the girls cannot practice as their coach is at that match with the boys. When both teams are practicing, the current coaches split among both teams and instructional opportunities become very limited. We respectfully ask that we are treated equitably and have a coach dedicated to our team. Sincerely, the returning members of the Varsity Girls Golf Team. And their names are listed there. Public comment number four. Hello, my husband and I are lifelong residents of Gilroyland and alumni of the Gilroyland Central School District. I have three children in the district in second, seventh, and eighth grade. My two older children have remained remote all year because we disagree with the mask policy. And my youngest was remote for half the year and came back to in-person in January because remote schooling took an emotional toll on him. Masking has not been easy on him. I'm writing to you today for two reasons that are connected. First, in response to your emails that you decided not to change the mask policy yet, I urge you to take the new guidelines into consideration and lift the mask mandate for our children. New York State has lifted the mask mandate for our children and put it into your hands. For this school year, when I, when I've heard this mask mandate be questioned, you've responded that it's out of your hands because it was a state guideline. Now it is in your hands. Forcing them to wear masks when they're the lowest risk is cruel and unhealthy to our children, and they have gone, gone through this long enough, especially on these hot days. Let this be a choice for our families and children. If they are comfortable to go unmasked, let them. If not, they can still mask. It has been proven over the last year in daycares across New York State that no mask mandate and no outbreaks, that children are not passing this virus like they had originally feared. It was proven that our children could be safely three feet apart without passing it. It was also proven in your email to us, when children do get this virus, the majority don't even show signs. And if they do, they have symptoms that are less severe than the flu. They are not dying from this virus. And now, if teachers and staff are worried about themselves, they can choose to get a vaccine. The risk is just not there for our children, so this needs to stop. Please unmask our children. Secondly, it's for your recent message in the morning broadcast on June 3rd, trying to persuade our children into getting the vaccine and not trust their parents' decisions. This infuriates me. The logic is just not there for our children to be vaccinated because of my reasons listed above, and many people agree that the risk doesn't outweigh the benefit of them getting it. Regardless of your opinion on it, this should be a family's and parents' decision and nothing to do with school. It shouldn't even be considered to be mandated when it comes approved for children, because they are not the at-risk group. This has, this has all gone too far, and I have been silent and bullied for long enough. I will not allow my children to be bullied and have their parents' decisions questioned by their school. If this continues, my house will be on the market, and my children will be removed from school and put into a private school until we can move to another district and most likely another state. I know for a fact that I do not stand alone. Our voices have been silenced long enough. Unmask our children. Thank you for your time and consideration, Melissa Dover. Public comment number five. I'd like to take this opportunity to voice my concerns regarding the lack of representation from parents in the school district in terms of continued mask mandates, as well as the potential for mandatory COVID-19 vaccines for children. If the state is lifting restrictions, this should be reflected within the schools. A vote from the parents of children in the district could give guidance as to how to handle this immediately, as well as the upcoming school year. We deserve a choice as how these monumental decisions are to be made. The lack of representation from the community is alarming at best. Thank you for taking the time to consider a vote and not a decision made solely by a few. Sarah Stultery. And the last public comment. Good evening. Would you please confirm that this will be the last virtual meeting? And starting in July, board and EDI meetings will be held in person, so parents and community members can be present. There have been so many behind-the-scenes decisions made by such a small number of individuals with little to no discussion. Now that we have a diversity administrator, please make public the job description. In reading the April 2021 New York State School, State Board of Regents, they describe the diversity administrator's job as indoctrinating the teachers. I asked Superintendent Wiles if critical race theory was going to be part of the curriculum. The answer was left up for discussion, so tonight, I'm asking that to be made public. Is critical race theory going to be, is going into the Gilroyland Central School District curriculum? Thank you, Kate Nowitzki. And I think those are all of the public comments, correct? Okay. I just wanted to address a couple of these public comments. First, about the mask mandate, I think we're going to be discussing this under, Dr. Wiles will be discussing this under superintendent information. Is that correct, Dr. Wiles?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, thank you to Ms. Jacobs for sharing her experiences with the district. That will be helpful going forward. The question about remote meetings and the plan in person, I think our plan is this is the last remote meeting, or at least that we're trying to have it back in person. Logistically, couldn't happen tonight because of, I think there was a retirement ceremony as well. And, one second. Critical race theory in school, I'm not really sure where this is coming from, but I think I made a diagram before in the Diversity and Equity Committee that whatever's discussed in that group doesn't automatically go into the schools. But we can discuss that further if people would like to at the end of the meeting. And then lastly, I just wanted to ask about the varsity golf coach. I know a couple of people and I discussed this right before the meeting. We didn't get a chance to ask. I don't know if you, Dr. Wiles, had a, had any follow-up to that. We just don't remember.
Not a ton. I mean, I just learned about this today. When Mr. Austin put together a written proposal, it was back in January, at a time when we weren't adding anything to the budget. We were, that was the time at which we were actually asking our administrative leaders to come up with reductions. So we didn't look at any additions at that time, and it did not come back to our attention again through the rest of the budget process. And then you'll all recall the whirlwind of the budget settling and at the state level and our, you know, having to wrap up the budget development piece. So we have not had any prolonged discussion about this position at all during this budget season. I think the timing of it, of the request was unfortunate, because we were anticipating reductions at that time.
Barb, did you have your hand up?
Yes. When I got the email, I called Neil and said, "What would it cost us to, you know, add the coach for next year?" Because everything that's in that letter is on point. You know, the Title IX piece, the fact that the kids can't practice if the boys' team is away, you know, because there is boys' team is away, you know, because there isn't a coach. So I would, you tell me what procedure we need to use, but I'd like to put a motion on the floor either today or whenever it's appropriate to provide the girls with this, with this coach. You know, our experience as a board has been over the years that there are many budget transfers that we do, you know, from one line item to another. And this is a very small amount that I think would provide some equity for the, you know, for the girls' team. So whenever it's appropriate to make such a motion, I would like to do that. And I'll be guided by Maria or Seema or whoever.
Can I just suggest, since this just came to our attention within the last few hours, that we get a little bit of time to do some homework because the budget has been set. We need to look at where it would be offset. And, you know, I'm sure we're more than willing to look at that, but it's hard kind of on the spot to say, okay, we can take these funds from a different place without actually having reviewed it. And there is plenty of time between now and the fall season that if this is possible, that we do it thoughtfully.
Okay, I just know that, as I said, over the years, you know, we've usually managed to put something into fund balance, thank God. And, you know, certain lines, be it energy or whatever, you know, changes over time, so I'm glad you're willing to take a look at it. Thanks.
Uh, Lon, can you add your hand up?
I agree with Barb and Marie in terms of waiting so that we do things the right way. I'm surprised, unpleasantly surprised that I feel like this is a big oversight, to be honest with you, that, you know, we had to get this letter so that it was called to our attention, and I'm disappointed that the girls' team doesn't have their coach to begin with when the boys' team has. I just want to put that out there.
Okay, so it sounds like it's something we can follow up, hopefully in the next board meeting, or maybe a little bit before that. That way, the district has time to look and see where in the budget that would make sense if it's possible. Can we just do that, Dr. Wiles, to follow up on that?
Absolutely.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments before we move on? All right, so moving on to the next part of the agenda, we have the consent items. This includes the minutes for May 25th, the CPSC and CSC recommendations, personnel action, and the financials. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Barb, Second Judy, any questions or comments here? Kelly, did you see, oh, did you freeze? Because I think you said you had a question before. I think I remember her question, so maybe I'll just ask. She had a question about the math, the math teacher, a .4 math teacher, and I think the nurse position. If that was, I don't know what your question was, Kelly, but it was about that. She frozen? Okay. Well, maybe we can come back to that because she's not typing in the chat, so I don't know what she's saying. All right, any other questions or comments about the consent agenda?
Hey, Seema, I can talk about the, the FTE, Math FTE, and the floating nurse. So those were like COVID, COVID additions that we made, and they're not currently budgeted for next year.
Okay. So they were added, they were added because of the COVID numbers to make that rule. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Hey, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? All in favor? Aye. Pass is nine zero. Next on the agenda, we have information items. First, we have curriculum and instruction, and I'll turn this over to Dr. Singleton.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. First is an update from Dave Austin and the Athletic Department. The following Gilderlin Varsity Winter High Risk and Fall Two teams have qualified for the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Scholar-Athlete Teams Award. To receive the Scholar-Athlete Team recognition with a certificate, the teams average a GPA for 75% of the roster must be greater than or equal to 90. And this, of course, means you take 75% of your roster and then average their GPAs. And the teams are the ice hockey team, girls' basketball, boys' basketball, competitive cheer, boys' volleyball, girls', girls' volleyball, and football. And if you're keeping score at home, that's a total of seven of the eight possible team, Gilderlin teams this winter in high-risk and fall two season, which is low and moderate risk, to receive the Scholar-Athlete Recognition. Twenty-three out of 24 Gilderlin teams have qualified as Scholar-Athlete Teams so far this school year. In addition to Scholar-Athlete Team recognition, a total of 74 Gilderlin athletes have qualified as individual Scholar-Athletes. And to receive the Individual Scholar-Athlete Recognition with a PIN, athletes must have a 90 GPA or above. So great, great job by our Scholar-Athletes. And for my next item, I'm very pleased to report that Gilderlin High School has been designated a 2020-21 Gold Star No Place for Hate School by the Anti-Defamation League. This designation recognizes Gilderlin High School's commitment to creating a safe and inclusive learning environment for all students. The No Place for Hate Initiative is designed to create inclusive communities and empower schools to challenge all forms of bigotry. The No Place for Hate Gold Star designation means that we are moving in the right direction as a high school, but we realize that building our culture and climate takes consistent effort, and we cannot never stop working on it, said Gilderlin High School Principal Michael Piscatelli. By participating in the No Place for Hate, Gilderlin High School has the opportunity to create a safer learning environment, promote unity and respect, and reduce bullying, name-calling, and other expressions of bias. So congratulations to Mr. Piscatelli and the high school team. This is a great designation.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Singleton.
You're welcome.
Next, we have superintendent information. Dr. Wiles?
Sure, my first item is really an update on the mask mandates. We have been on a bit of a roller coaster since about 3 o'clock on Friday afternoon when the New York State Department of Health Commissioner wrote a letter to the CDC kind of calling into question where we should be with mask-wearing in schools. However, last evening, the New York State Department of Health kind of solidified the expectations for schools, at least for the rest of the school year. So the requirements now are that everyone wears a mask in school while we're in school, but masks are not required outside of school. So when students are outside at recess or during athletic events, they are not required, and the school district is following those guidelines. So masks required indoors, masks not required outdoors. Now, if individuals wished to wear a mask outdoors, they certainly can, but we are not requiring it. So I'll take questions. I know we've had a lot of back and forth on this over the last four days, but very appreciative of the Department of Health providing the clarification so we can kind of get back to the business of finishing up our school year. Seema, is that your hand up? And Rebecca's gonna hurt. Oh, I see a bunch of hands. Rebecca, I wanna go.
Sure. Don't wanna cut off Seema. I just wanna like, I know you just said this, but I just want to emphasize, this is not up to a vote, right? Like, there seems to be this misconception that the boards can just vote to relinquish the mask guideline, and that's not the case. So I'm just emphasizing that point.
Yes, thanks, Rebecca. Seema, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand initially.
Oh, that's okay. I just, so I know we're talking about the end of the school year, but it might be, I don't know. I, I'm guessing over the summer, we'll receive guidance as things changes, change over the summer. And maybe there's an opportunity to ask for parental input just to get, you know, how people are feeling about whatever new guidance comes out. But, but for the rest of the school year, I feel, I'm relieved to hear that they're going to have masks. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. And we will be seeking stakeholder input on our, on our plans going forward. So, and parents are always welcome to send their emails, but in the end, I think, as Rebecca mentioned, we, we don't have a lot of discretion over Department of Health guidelines for school districts. We are held to a higher standard than many other private organizations and entities and businesses in the state. So we do have to defer to the guidance that comes. Judy and then Barbara.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I know the teachers are giving the students like outside encouraging ways for them to wear their masks and yet not feel constricted by them, and I think that's good. The teachers, this has put them in a difficult place, and I just appreciate that everybody's working, trying to find solutions that make people comfortable.
Thanks, Judy. Barbara?
Just had a question on the, one of the statements that the parent made, that with an hour left to school, they, they were called because their child had what she thought was an allergy and a little bit of a runny nose. Do we have a time span that, you know, if we're that close to the end of the school day, that, you know, the child can, I mean, they've already been exposed to all their, their peers. Is there any kind of a window that, you know, if there's two hours left to school, that, you know, they can either stay in the nurse's office or whatever? I'm just not aware of what the timelines are.
I don't think we have any formalized timelines. If a child was exhibiting symptoms at any point in the day, the child would be sent to the nurse, and then the nurse is going to make the judgment call based on the circumstances, so there's no fear within a certain period of time, we'll just let you ride out the day. So that's what I can say at this point. I'm happy to check in with Mary Wagerman, our head nurse, but I'm pretty sure she would confirm what I, what I just explained. Thank you. Any other questions about masks? All right, well, then my second topic is to recognize Luciano Alonzi. This is his last official board meeting. So Luciano, we want to just thank you so much. You have brought a lot to our group of nine with your insightful comments and your perspective, so we're really going to miss having your presence among us, so thank you for that. You've been with us since June of 2020, and you are on business practices, and you were also on the hardest-working committee on the board, otherwise known as the Policy Committee. And you served as the PTSA liaison to the high school, and all of those are very valued roles. So we want to thank you for your time and really wish you all the best as you go forward in your next endeavor. So thank you, Luciano.
Thank you, Marie. It's been an honor to serve the community.
And that's all of your items, right, Dr. Wiles?
It is, yes.
Thank you. So moving on to board president information, first, we have the NISBA convention, and we have the resolution kit also attached to that. The convention will be held, as far as I know, in person. I don't know if Barb, if you know any different, or Judy, in person in New York City, October 24th to October 26th. Registration opens on August 16th. If board members are interested in attending, please let Linda Livingston, Linda Livingston Board Clerk know as soon as possible. And if anybody is interested in submitting, like I mentioned, a resolution, the 2021 Resolution Kit is attached to the agenda. Next, we have the Board of Education Student Awards and other end-of-year ceremonies. So first, listed there, we have the High School and Middle School Board of Education Awards for Notable Improvement, and the names are listed here on the agenda. Then we also have the Gilderlin High School Board of Education Awards for Superior Achievement. And if I remember correctly, the middle school and high school awards will be also noted when they have their ceremonies. That's correct, Dr. Wiles?
So eighth grade and 11th and 12th will be included in their, for eighth grade, it's the Moving Up Ceremony. And 11th and 12th will be at the Junior/Senior Award Ceremony, which I believe is going to air on June 10th. I'm pretty sure that's the date, yes. The rest, we're working on other plans.
Thank you. And then last, the FMS Board of Education Award Superior Achievement. The names are also listed here, so like Dr. Wiles mentioned, grade eight will be addressed at the Moving Up Ceremony, and I think grade six and seven, they should be sent home. Or at least that's what was last discussed, unless that changed.
We will be mailing the certificates, and then we're looking to find a way to make a little mini maybe video to send home to families to recognize the students. So we're working on how best to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Wiles. Letter C, we have Board of Education Policy Review, and we have a list of policies, A through M. I had a question or comment, but I'll first, you know, ask the policy committee if there's anything that they want to note for the rest of us. I'm sorry, unmuted. Go ahead, Barb.
Okay. We, one of the things that we took a second look at with Jeff was the public participation at board meetings. And one of the adjustments is that there is a time limit of 20 minutes for the first section. And with the ability of the board to override, you know, there was, if you had a particularly contentious group of people that came before the board and you didn't wanna, you wanted all of them to be heard, then the board can override that 20-minute time period. And the second one, he recommended 10 minutes. And then you'll notice a little bit of a revision in the statement that says, "The board expressly prohibits public comment that would infringe on a particular person's or student's privacy rights, would be disruptive of the board meeting, or create some safety issue." And again, this was Marie consulting with Jeff as to, you know, how do you protect the, the public citizen who anyone could stand up and say anything about without any ability of that individual to defend themselves? So that was a little bit of change of language there. On 4710, student assessment, probably the, the thing that we discussed the most is that there be written feedback on assignments and that be written into the policy. Over the years, you know, we have gotten some feedback from parents that kids do assignments and then, you know, they, they never have any corrections or whatever. So that was sort of stressed. And also that we're encouraging teachers, if they're interested, to set up some alternative assessment models other than the numeric grading system. And they would have to have department approval for that, but we're just trying to be a little bit more progressive here and say that, you know, if, if a teacher would like to set up this type of a system with the approval of their department chair, then, you know, they, they certainly can give it a try. 4710R. And again, on that one, I, if you, I don't know if anybody has it pulled up, but the wording didn't seem to be quite correct on number two. It's, I think it should read, "Teachers have the discretion to decide on the weighing of various grade components." So in other words, say if you're an English teacher and you, you know, want to assign a certain amount for, for quizzes, a certain amount for finals, certain amount for writing pieces, that they would have that discretion. And, but again, we, we hope that all teachers on the same grade level, teaching the same course, will sort of work with their department heads to have the same amount of homework. 4750, detention of students. Students failing two or more subjects will be recommended for summer school. We just think that that's good for students. 5310, student discipline. There's no substantive changes. But we did add to the in-service program for staff to include programs on social and emotional health as well. 5312, dangerous 5312, dangerous weapons in school, there's no substantive changes there. 5313 penalties. We move the, an appeals process on the part of parents who might think that the penalty is too severe or whatever, to the front of the policy from the tail end of the policy. And we've sort of emphasized in the possibility of penalties, more of a restorative justice model. And that is seen in number two. Under 5313.1, detention. Again, the very few, no really substantive changes, just a notice that the record of the details, detention, it would be kept in the student management system. And 5313.2, the name was changed from in-school detention to in-school suspension. I think everybody realizes that when you suspend a kid and they have to stay at home, not too much is being achieved other than them be able to use their gaming system and watch TV. So we've changed the, just the title to an in-school suspension where there will be supervision and assistance so that they can, you know, maintain their coursework. And 5313.3, student out of school suspension, which, you know, is for the direst of circumstances. Nobody likes to do that and it would be only in the severest of cases. Seema, you said you had some questions?
Yeah, I have some questions and comments on a few of those. So I guess we'll start with the public participation.
Sure.
I have a real problem saying we're going to limit the time. I mean, I, I can say that we can follow our, you know, adhere to our policy better about the minutes for a public comment because we've been getting so many and we obviously don't want to be here, you know, till midnight. But to say that we're going to limit the whole public comment section to 20 minutes, I think is silencing the public. I don't think we should be doing that. I'm not really sure why that's even come up.
But remember, there is an override by the board if there is a plethora of comments and, you know, the board wants to hear it. But what I think Jeff was trying to avoid, that you spend 45 minutes basically in, in some instances, reading, you know, the same form letter, basically about a particular subject. And in this way, you know, the, the president can sort of coalesce those around a particular topic, name the names and all the stuff would still be attached to the minutes. But it, it's not a, it's not a real big change.
Well, I, I think that's a big change to all of a sudden limit it to 20 minutes. That, you know, that public, we want people to be engaged in the district. And so all of a sudden to say that we're going to limit it to 20 minutes, there's never been a rule about this that I've seen. And I also don't think we need to vote every time we have, you know, X number of public comments. And then, you know, how do we decide which public comment gets read first? And if there's a form letter that's exactly the same, we can read that and say it was sent by, you know, these additional people. But a lot of times there, sometimes I should say, they're not always the same. They're the same topic, but the language people use, they take time to write and so they should be read individually if they took the time to write. I don't, I don't see why we would do that. I also don't think, I don't really know why we would have to go to the school lawyer to talk about this. Like this has never come up as an issue. We shouldn't be silencing people. I don't think this is the way to go at all.
It certainly wasn't anyone's intention to silence people at all. And, you know, also in the policy, we have that a time limit of three to four minutes, you know, if a person is, is coming. And I, I know in some meetings, we've stuck to that. This particular meeting, we didn't. So, you know, we're just trying to be as consistent as possible. You know, I mean, we certainly will take your comments and, you know, take it back again and, and take a second look at it. But in no way, as I said, was it meant to restrict commentary. Jeff pointed out that, you know, this is a meeting of the board and you certainly want public input, but you don't want 45 minutes to 50 minutes of commentary that's going to delay your conducting, you know, your, your normal business. So that, that was an intention.
I mean, I think that's exactly what it intends to do is to silence people. When we go back to in-person meetings and, you know, 10 people show up and, you know, the first five, you know, we reached that 20 minute limit, what are we going to send five people home? I think that's absolutely ridiculous. I'm not really sure, yes, it's the board meeting, so I'm not really sure, you know, why we're even asking the school lawyer unless we're just asking for advice. But I didn't ask for any advice about changing. I mean, I think we could adhere better to the rules of three to five minutes. So we're not sitting here all night. I, I understand that and we can definitely get better at that. And it's probably been more public comment because it's online, it's easier to send in than coming in person. But I think that's exactly what it's doing is silencing people. I think that, that's not going to be, I don't think that's really acceptable. That's, this is exactly. I'll take, I think Ben, you had your hand up first?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, the, the way Jeff described it to us was, you know, that, that, that really is, is to maintain neutrality, you know, to maintain an appearance of neutrality on the part of the board. The only thing that, that changed there was we cut out the word approximately. The, the policy always read that, that the first, the first public comment period will take up to or approximately 20 minutes. And, and that the second one would take approximately 10 minutes. And, and one of the points that he, he was making was that, he says, "Boards frequently do not enforce these restrictions until such time as a controversial topic arises and the board wishes to curtail comment on that topic. And then when doing so, the board can receive this limited discussion." And so his recommendation was instead of kind of this big up to and approximately 20 minutes, that kind of is based more on the discretion of the board on when we want to enforce it or not. He wanted, he, he recommended a firm, a firm time limit. I think, I think we're all amenable to, to increasing that time limit. But the idea was that, was just firm up the language. It wasn't really to, to, as Barb said, you know, dispel comments.
Blanca?
I was going to recommend that maybe we table this one and Marie, maybe you can forward the email string that's in place with Jeff so that all the board members can get a better picture.
Kelly, I, I don't know if it would, I'll just, before Kelly, I don't know if there was an email string or not, but I guess, Dr. Wiles, I don't know if you can respond to that?
So when the committee did its first read of this policy as part of our regular review, there were just a number of questions. And so, you know, we regularly reach out to our school attorney around matters of policy to get his opinion. So he, he wrote a lengthy email to me that I shared with the committee, but I can easily share that email to the entire board. And I, I think, you know, I can do that this Friday in the update if you'd like, or sooner if you'd like.
That sounds good. Maybe in the Friday update would be helpful. Kelly? And then Rebecca? You're muted, Kelly. Oh, maybe you're not muted. We just can't hear you. I can't hear you. I'll come back to Rebecca.
Um, I was just going to say, I don't think we should have any approximate time limit on it. And I, I see your point, Ben, that you were really just amending what was previously there from the approximation. But I don't think there should be sort of a time limit on it. I think we could limit the, the time for the speakers more consistently than we have in the past year, for sure. But I don't think there should be some arbitrary time limit for the section of public comment.
Okay, I'll try Kelly again. Nope. All right, Luciano?
So the goal of the policy wasn't to censor anybody or prevent anybody from speaking to the board. It was just to keep meetings moving along. You know, we didn't want to have a scenario where, you know, public comment is taking upwards of half an hour, right? Where it's becoming the majority of the meeting and it takes a long time. Because people get disinterested, you know, in the meeting. We want to make sure things are moving along. So I, I'm not necessarily against getting rid of the overall time limit. We could definitely extend that. We could get rid of it. As long as we just keep comments brief, you know, like three to five minutes, I think is a very fair timeframe. And if we start enforcing that, that's fine. So we could definitely make a couple of changes here and there. But the, the goal is definitely not to censor anybody.
Try Kelly again? No, I can't hear you. I agree with Luciano about the three to five minutes. I think we can definitely adhere to that better. I mean, I'm the one reading these ones now, so I am happy to limit to three to five minutes. But I, I really think, I mean, we're stewards of the community. We shouldn't be silencing people, regardless of the goal or the intent of what this policy change was. That I think that's, and you know, I read comments and there's opinions being said in the comments that completely disagree with, or I'm sick of hearing about, but that's not our job. Like our job is to allow people to speak their mind. That's what public comment is for. You know, like it or not. I don't, I just think having a time limit overall is a bad idea. I think adhering to the each individual public comment and sticking to that time can be better. I know some boards, I think, even have like a timer, like a clock somewhere. So there's like a countdown of the five minutes and maybe, you know, when we go back in person, we can see if we still have a lot of public comments, if, if that is something we can think about. But overall, limiting public comments, I think is a terrible idea. Barb and then Kelly?
One of the things I just want to remind everybody, this, this rule has been in effect for like 20 somewhat years. And the few times that I can recall when we had a whole bunch of people lined up, the board simply just, just took a vote and said, you know, we will extend the time by 30 minutes or 20 minutes or whatever. When we were doing the, the, I can remember a whole bunch of soccer people coming up and usually it's some kind of an athletic type of thing. And then also when the Altamont School, one consultant said that it should be closed, there was a huge outpouring of people. And we listened to everybody, but we just sort of had that 20 minutes, it said approximately 20 minutes as a guideline, you know, for the board. And it, it's worked very, very successfully, I thought, you know, over the years. And, you know, we can leave it at that or whatever. You know, I'm, I'm perfectly amenable. But as I think Luciano pointed out, it certainly wasn't meant to censor anybody, but to make the board work perhaps a little more efficiently. And as you said, keeping to the timeline is maybe, you know, would, would be, you know, a nice compromise here.
Okay, Kelly, you called in? You're being silenced, Kelly, I guess. Sorry. Gloria?
I was just going to say, I, I definitely agree with the comments by Rebecca and Seema that really the public comment is a crucial part of our job. I mean, I think listening to the public and what they have to say is very valuable. Just, just think of tonight's comments. I mean, they're very, very valuable to us. So I don't think we need the 20 minutes. I don't think we need a limitation on the time we spend. If it's so easy for us to extend it, then let's just not have a time. Let's just let the people who come have their, have their time, but limit the time, be very good about, I mean, we really got to be better about that, you know, saying three to five minutes and then a buzzer goes off or something and nobody's made to feel terrible about it, but that's just the time limit. And if we did that, then the number of people that come, that tells us how important an issue it is. So I would like to see us, you know, get rid of the 20 minute thing and just have it adhere very closely, come up with a physical way of letting people know your time is up and that, that piece ends. But I, I really value the public comment section.
Luciano?
So one of the things that we discussed when we were coming, coming up with this policy was that because of COVID, right, we haven't had in-person meetings, so everything has been sent in via email or, or mail. So people, people may be more inclined to write longer, longer comments and they would be willing to speak. So that may be more of the reason why we chose to go this route. I'm not sure going forward in the future, and the next meeting is going to be in person. Is that going to, are we going to have the public there as well, or is it just going to be the board? That's something to consider as well.
Yeah, it sounds like those, the piece of being public and how many people can come in. I mean, I, I think those are probably all going to be arranged. But, I mean, I also think that when we go back in person, there will probably be less public comment just because it's, you know, harder to come to the school at that time and do that. But, you know, I don't think we need to have a time limit there at all. I think we can just adhere to that. Kelly, can, can we hear you now? No, sorry. Okay. You can write it in the chat if you want. Gloria, is your hand up again, or is that from before?
Can you hear me? You can't hear me, right?
I can hear you.
Oh, you can hear me. I just swore. I'm sorry. Wow. I forgot what I was going to say, but I don't, I don't agree with any limit at all. I don't know where the complaint is coming from. I honestly don't mind sitting here all night long if we have to. I don't have a complaint. So if 20 people want to make a comment, that's 20 minutes long, then that's our job to listen to them. This is, I think people are frustrated in that they can't come and express their feelings. And this is their way to express their feelings. So why not listen to them? So wow, that was a lot of effort to kind of say what everybody else is saying. Now try not to swear again on camera. I swear I thought my mic was off.
Okay, well now we know it sounds good.
Now we know it works at least. All right.
Thanks. Before we go to the, the other one, I had a couple of comments and questions about another one, but Barb, I don't know if the, this is up for information anyway, so maybe we can still talk about that. I don't know if you guys have a meeting before next meeting.
No, that one, we did have one, but Marie's schedule is so tight towards the end of the year that she asked if we would cancel it and we did. So we can hold off until, you know, next year. There's no record here.
Okay. I also had a comment, I don't know which one it was, the grading systems. I, I, maybe I'm, you know, I didn't, I just read through them, you know, briefly, but I guess I'm not understanding, like, we're not the teachers at the school, so I'm not sure why we're creating policy and probably impacting academic freedom in terms of telling teachers they have to have written feedback. I mean, as a parent, I would all, I would love written feedback for everything, but I think having a policy come from the board to tell teachers that is, is not a good idea. I'm not really sure why we would do that in the first place. I mean, we're hiring people, you know, and I know that, you know, there's always people who could, you know, use improvement and get suggestions back from their, their leadership, but I don't really know why we'd have a blanket policy statement about receiving written feedback. And then the last thing was about the in-school suspension and I guess just suspensions in general. If we're hiring the, the DEI coordinator now, I think this would be a good place also to have that, that new person look at these policies because I know that we always have, I think we have, or just in general, we know that there's many times students of color are overrepresented in those, those categories. So I don't know if, if there's a rush, you can let me know. But otherwise, I think, I would say that we can hold off on those as well. And.
Do you want to hold off on?
What, Barb?
Which ones did you want to hold off on? Just the, the three detention ones? The detention, in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension?
Yeah, and I guess student discipline is on a separate, a separate policy too?
Right.
Yeah.
But there was, how they, I don't think there were any really changes made in that one.
Right. There, there might not be any changes, but maybe we can still make proactive changes.
Okay. Now getting back to your question about the, the assessments. One of the things that we're, that is on there now is a result of parent complaints that the parent, despite, you know, having access to the portal and all, didn't know that their child was failing until they, they get the report card that, you know, the, the child is not doing well. And so one of the things that was changed is that the, the teachers in the, will produce an interim progress report to students who are struggling in class. To me, this, this is not overly burdensome to the teachers. It, it certainly will help the parents to realize that their child is struggling. to realize that their child is struggling, and it helps both the parent and the child. The feedback on their assignments and all, I guess, I just don't see that as an infringement on their academic freedom. If you make an assignment to a child, and be it a term paper or homework assignment or whatever, and you don't give them feedback on it, what was the point of giving it to them? And so I would suspect most teachers do that. But, you know, we have had concerns from parents that, and kids too, that, you know, they've done this, or they've done that, and they don't get any feedback on it until maybe at the end of the marking period, so that there's no room for growth, there's no room for corrections. So that's why that was inserted.
It doesn't say just feedback, says written feedback, which is completely different.
Well, written feedback means that there are corrections on the paper or whatever. I mean, you maybe suggest different language, but that was the intent, that there be some discussion about the homework or the assignment at some point, and not, you know, it just sort of lays there.
Well, right. I mean, discussion is not written feedback. I just think we shouldn't be deciding how, I mean, I understand what you're saying. If the teacher is not following up with a parent, if the parent has a complaint about not knowing how their child is doing, that is the case that has to be dealt with by, you know, the parent calling the teacher and moving up the chain if they need to. But just to make this policy to say, you all need written feedback, I think is, I'm not really sure why we would do that, why we would even think to.
The other thing, let me point out, all these policies have had feedback from the stakeholders. So we didn't make these changes in isolation. These are the things that, you know, people have looked at that are on the front lines. So it's not just something that we plucked out of the air, but they have all had access to, you know, making suggestions and, you know, reviewing what was here. We didn't get any negative feedback from any teachers at all that this was a concern. Marie, I don't know if you want to speak to it, but
Can I jump in? We had a team of leadership team members who worked on the regulation. But they did not make any changes to the policy. So the changes in the actual policy, 4710, they had not made any changes to that. They did all of their work on the regulation, which you also have. Just want to clarify that we did not have them, they did not respond to what you see tonight. That came after they did their feedback.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that is huge. You can't just be saying that unless the teachers have input. I mean, the right stakeholders need to look at that. I don't think we can just add that without having the input, like sneak it in there. I don't think that's right. Gloria and then Ben? I'm sorry, I didn't see the order. It was Gloria and then Ben.
Well, I was gonna say, I agree with you, Seema, in terms of, I don't think you can require that kind of thing. I mean, as a teacher myself, I know sometimes I assign kids something to do in the evening, and then they bring it in the next day, and we have a discussion on it. I don't, I don't write on the papers. I don't collect them and write on them. But I have them use that, what they did overnight for homework, and then we have a discussion, and we use that information to, you know, to learn with. But I don't necessarily collect it. So I don't think that's something we want to mandate or say to teachers, you know, you have to give written feedback to every student on every assignment or whatever. I think it varies. It just varies on the purpose of the assignment and what it's going to be used for, how it's going to be used when they bring it back.
I just wanted to jump in and clarify that this doesn't mandate written feedback on assignment in lieu of or in addition to grades. If you read the sentence in full, it says, "In addition to formal report card grades or progress reports, feedback about student performance will include teacher conferences with parents and our students, telephone and our email contacts, standardized test score results, and written feedback on assignments." The purpose here was just to broaden kind of the categories of feedback. Feedback about student performance will include, and we just wanted to kind of plant a seed that, you know, this is an encouraged method of feedback. So just like not every student is getting telephone and email contacts, and not every student, especially at the high school level, is getting, you know, teacher conferences and stuff, you know, I don't think this is saying that on every assignment, there needs to be written feedback. This is saying that feedback about student performance will include some of the written feedback on assignments that may or may not be there. So I just wanted to clarify that, because this isn't, believe me, I'm very strict about not stepping on teachers' toes when it comes to some of these policies. So all of these changes are really to broaden the range of possibilities, not to limit it.
I guess, because there's already written feedback that happened, so I guess I didn't see why we'd have to change it. I mean, you know, I know, I think in one of our goals, or at some point, we talked about alternative assessments and just grading in general. And so that, I think, would be a great discussion to keep having. I think we talked about after COVID, hopefully that we can talk more about that. But I guess I don't see the need to focus so much on the grading systems and the assessments right now. But that's just, that's just my two cents. And
So, I mean, these came up in the rotation. So these are just, you know, 2013, 2014 policies that we were looking at. And, you know, you'll see at the end of that policy, 4710, that extra paragraph, you know, Gilderlin Central School District recognizes and encourages the use of alternative assessment models. Again, you know, the work hasn't been done on this, and this doesn't say that we need to use alternative assessment models. It just kind of opens that door for that future work, so that it's allowed under our current policy. You know, again, this is about kind of increasing flexibility for teachers, not taking
I guess I had just one last question. I didn't know, Barb, or I guess anybody in the policy committee, you know, if like NISBA or Bosnes or any, I guess, other organization has policies about online meetings? Or how like their board meetings that are conducted online, if there's anything written about that? I know we're trying to go back to in-person, but I'm just wondering going forward if there's anything like that. You're muted, Barb.
I haven't seen anything from NISBA, you know, along those lines.
Blanca?
One thing that was added, just back to one of your points, Seema, about diversity and inclusion as it relates to suspensions. In 5313.3, Ben actually drafted this addition at the bottom, which is highlighted in yellow, "Out-of-school suspensions will be reported to the Board of Education on a regular basis. At least once annually, a report will be prepared and provided to the Board of Education, which anonymizes and, sorry, can't read this, disaggregate suspension data by subgroup in order to identify potential opportunities to improve equity in disciplinary outcomes, if any." So that was, that is an addition, and that's an attempt to address what you brought up.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions about the policies that are up for information? Okay, so we'll move on next to action items. First, we have school business, and I'll turn it over to Neil.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. First item this evening is a resolution to approve Yostopol Certificate Recognizing the Acquisition of Forefront Power by Natala Solar as it relates to the district's solar power and services agreement.
Can I have a motion to approve the certificate? Blanca, second. Judy, any questions? All in favor? Passes nine zero.
Next is a resolution to approve the following agreements. Center for Disability Services, Forwin Saratoga, Greenberg North Castle, Union Free School District, Music Speaks, and Wildwood School.
Can I have a motion to approve the service agreements? Barb, second. Rebecca, any questions? All in favor? Passes nine zero.
Next is a resolution to approve the agreement with SUNY Cortland to accept students for internship and practicum experience.
Can I have a motion to approve the agreement? Judy, second. Rebecca, any questions about that? All in favor? Passes nine zero.
Next is a resolution authorizing the destruction of ballots from the 2020 district election.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution to destroy ballots in 2020? Blanca, second. Gloria, any questions? All in favor? Passes nine zero.
Next is a resolution to approve budgetary transfers totaling $202,694, as detailed in your materials.
Can I have a motion to approve the general fund transfers? Gloria, second. Judy, any questions about these? All in favor? Passes nine zero.
Next is a resolution to create and establish a charitable fund in accordance with education law to receive unrestricted charitable monetary donations for use by the district for public educational purposes.
Can I have a motion to approve the charitable fund? Ben, second. Barb, any questions? All in favor? Passes nine zero.
Next is a resolution authorizing a payment in lieu of taxes agreement between the Gilderlin Central School District and Crumkill Road Solar North LLC and Crumkill Road Solar South LLC.
Can I have a motion to approve the pilot agreement? Judy, second. Gloria, any questions about this? All in favor? Passes nine zero. Okay, thank you, Neil. Next, we have superintendent action, Dr. Wiles.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. I have just one item this evening, and this is, we're seeking approval of a memorandum of agreement by and between the Gilderlin Central School District, the Gilderlin Support Staff Association, and David Willey, who is a member of that association. This would allow him to roll two additional vacation days into the new fiscal year to be used by August 31st.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the MOA? Barb, second. Kelly, any questions or comments? All in favor? It passes nine zero. Thank you, Dr. Wiles. Next, we have board president action. First, we have the name change of Equity and Diversity Committee. On that committee, we talked about aligning the name with the New York State Border Regents framework that they put out, which would be diversity, equity, inclusion, so changing it to DEI. And so we have it on for action, or I'm sorry, we have it on, yeah, for action. But I know we didn't talk about this before, so I think we could vote to suspend the rules and vote on this. But I, just throwing it out, if anybody has any, first, a motion to approve the, a motion to suspend the rules. Barb, second. Judy, okay, all in favor? It passes nine zero. Now can I have a motion to approve the name change? Barb, second. Ben, any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? To change the name of the committee to the DEI Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. Passes nine zero. Thank you. Next, we have Board of Education Policy Adoption. We have a list of policies A through F that were up for information last time, having to do with homework, student organizations, I think. Yeah, that's what, that's what they're all about. So any, can I have a motion to approve these policies? Barb, second. Ben, any questions or comments? All in favor? It passes nine zero. Okay, thank you, everybody. We'll move on to board committee reports. We'll start with business practices.
We haven't had a meeting, and we do not have one scheduled.
Thank you, Judy. Policy?
You have the fruits of our labors, and I think we're done for the year.
Thank you. Well, next, audit?
We have not met since our last meeting, and we have no meeting scheduled.
And communications?
Ditto for communications. We have not met, and we do not have one scheduled.
And DEI committee?
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, you can hear me.
Okay. Boy, I'm having computer problems. We have a meeting 22, it's June 22nd at 7:00 p.m. It'll be live stream, and that's all the updates that I have.
Thank you. Okay, so the next board meeting, which would be July 1st, we would throw out the new committee members for all of the board committees. So just putting that out there. I think this would be the last one for the year, the updates. Next, we have public comment number two. Are there any other public comments? So thank you. And then we have board issues, ideas, and sharing. Does anybody have any ideas or anything they want to share? And next, I'll need a motion to move to executive session. Ben, second. Rebecca, all in favor? It passes nine zero. Thank you, everybody. I think we have a second link for executive. See you later.